Kelly. Bishop. Brancatelli.
Here.
Present.
Cleveland.
Here.
Conwell. Griffin.
Here.
Hairston.
Present.
Johnson. Bashir Jones. Joe Jones.
Here.
Casey.
Present.
McCormack.
Present.
Mooney. Polencik.
Present.
Santana. Sly.
Present.
Spencer. You have a call, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Today, we are, we're called together to deal with a vacancy that will be created in Ward Five upon the resignation of Councilwoman Phyllis Cleveland. At this point, what I would like to do is call on Councilwoman Cleveland to make remarks and make her recommendation and let her know how, I'm sorry.
I just need to, to read the letter of resignation.
Okay, I'm sorry. Dear Clerk Britt, I hereby submit my letter of resignation from Cleveland City Council effective today, May 3rd, excuse me, 2021. This has been a difficult decision as I have loved serving in this body, working every day to improve the lives of Ward Five constituents and Cleveland residents overall. I have gained so much from my, excuse me, from every council member and council staff person I have worked with. This has been the experience of a lifetime for me, a girl who grew up in the central neighborhood. It has been an honor and a privilege. Sincerely, Phyllis E. Cleveland. Thank Clerk Britt, and I think I can, you know, just speak for myself that what a great pleasure it is to have worked with Councilwoman Cleveland, all of the things we've been through together and just a remarkable friend, a, just a, just a deep body of knowledge on any subject, just very well versed, very well read on everything and just that, that intellect is going to be, is going to be greatly missed. I see certain hands up. I'd like to, if we can, call on Councilwoman Cleveland for her remarks first, and then we will hear from, from the body, if that's all right, just to stay on script. So, Councilwoman Cleveland?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, today I have the, or right now I have the distinct pleasure of introducing to some of you and reminding others of you of this young woman I'm about to introduce. You know, she's a great friend. She's an outstanding community leader. And she is the person that I am recommending that Cleveland City Council vote to replace me as a council, council lady, the councilwoman of Ward Five. Dolores Gray, again, I've known her many years. We've had the opportunity to work together on so many things and so many types of events and initiatives in Ward Five, in the central community, as well as other side, other parts of the community. You know, Dolores is, she has numerous affiliations and she will share those with you, but most people can tell you, they seen Dolores working on many, many fronts in the community. I've had people say to me that, well, she has big shoes to fill, you know, going back to Lonnie Burton and Frank Jackson. But what I will say is that she has big hearts to fill and she is more than capable. She is more than up to the task. Dolores is one of those people who, she, she's not one of those people who, who shows up and signs the book so she can say she was there. When Dolores shows up and she rolls up her sleeves, you will know she was there because the evidence of her work is left behind. And so to my colleagues, I would just say that she is the colleague that you want to have. She will be with you. She will stand with you. She's hardworking. She has initiative and I just, you know, recommend her with all my heart and soul to be the, the next councilperson of Ward Five.
Councilwoman, thank you very much and thank you for your years of service. What I would like to do is before we hear from, from Ms. Gray, I just want to hear from our colleagues. I suspect they're going to want to have some comments for you, Councilwoman, before we hear from Ms. Gray, then call the vote. So I'll begin with Councilman Blaine Griffin.
Thank you, Council President. This weekend was a tough weekend because in this job you run into some rare people. You run into some people who really become personal friends with you, people who you really deeply care about, people who you actually, you know, get to call family. Phyllis Cleveland is one of those people. I'm happy for her, but I'm also sad. It was a difficult weekend. A lot of people don't know, we spent a lot of times, a lot of times talking and trying to figure out how we could be helpful with the citizens of Cleveland, what kind of things we needed to do to make the tough decisions, to make sure that this council is supported because at no time did Phyllis ever relent from making sure that she was a leader and protector of this council. We got a huge loss and I want people to recognize that. Phyllis was very, very smart and one of the things I tell folks that I often wasn't the smartest kid in class, but I was smart enough to know when to sit next to the smartest kid in class. So I had a privilege of the last four years to sit next to one of the smartest kids in class in Phyllis Cleveland. I'm happy that she got an opportunity to endorse and bring in a young lady who I've known for a long time, a person who I think adds to the diversity and the leadership of council because of her life experience. So I want you to recognize Dolores is a person that brings significant life experience. She brings the, the voice of a lot of people in CMHA who consider her a penultimate leader. So I support Councilwoman Cleveland's choice, but Phyllis, Phil, as I call you, I'm going to miss you. You ain't going to get rid of me that easy. I'm still going to be texting you and calling you and, you know, us wily Aquarius's, you know, people don't know what's going on inside our head.
Right.
But you and you used to be able to almost read each other's mind because that's just how close we became. So I, I mean, you know, I feel like, you know, I'm, I'm losing a very good friend, but at the same time, I'm gaining a great colleague. So sis, I love you. I thank you. We're always going to be here for you. And as I tell everybody, you know, once a councilperson, always a councilperson, once a public servant, always a public servant. And this is a cautionary tale to the public and I want them to understand this. These jobs are tough. These jobs are difficult. It is not just glam and glory like everybody thinks it is. This is real, hard, rough, rigorous work. I'm even quote my guy, Councilman Bashir Jones. The first day that he took this job, he talked about the awesome responsibility is when you actually are responsible for 25,000 or more people that you actually have to advocate for on a day-to-day basis. Phyllis Cleveland did that. Phyllis Cleveland did that. She did it well. She came after some very great servants in Ward Five and sis, at the end of the day, job well done and I appreciate your service to the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman Griffin. Councilman Kevin Bishop.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President. I want to concur with Councilman Blaine's point. He hit it right on the head when he talked about Phyllis. You know, Phyllis, my only regret is that I didn't get a chance to serve more time with you on council. I am, I am not an overly emotional type of guy. I don't wear my, my emotions on my sleeve, but I had, I had to choke back tears when I heard the news that you were stepping down as council. And let me say this, I've been following city council for probably almost 40 years or, or more. And I want to say I have a personal, what I call a Hall of Fame. And Phyllis, you are in my Hall of Fame as members of council, okay? And I'm going to miss you and I'm, and also, and my wife is even saddened that when she heard the news that you were stepping down, she was, she was distraught too. So you are, are truly been an inspiration to me and, and our relationship is never going to end, okay? We always going to keep in contact. Thanks, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Bishop. Councilman Anthony Hairston.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to echo my colleagues, you know, Phyllis, I didn't get a chance to, Councilwoman Cleveland, I'll say that, I'm going to call you Phyllis. Councilwoman Cleveland didn't get a chance to, you know, have the relationship that you and Blaine and others have had. Obviously you all have worked together for many other years, but as I told you, I said to you in text, you know, I wish you good health, your voice of reason always come in at the right time on certain situations where we're, where we're discussing things within the body. And I meant that. Your wealth of knowledge, as we've heard, is impeccable, you know, you, you at times, along with you and Councilman Polencik, you, you give us that historical knowledge, some understanding, you know, and, and, and come with some good words of support at times when we're, when we're going through some tough periods. So again, I, I wish you all the success, wish you good health and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hairston. Councilman Joe Jones.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. To Phyllis Cleveland, you know, we are going to miss you. You know, your 16 years of public service to the citizens of this city and to your ward, you have established yourself as a person who has worked tirelessly to rebuild your neighborhood and we can see all of the good works throughout your community. I think that's one of the things that's really important. Whenever you talk about a good public servant, a lot of people want to look at how do you, how do you value that? What's that value? And for me, and what I see is the same for you, is what you're able to see and touch and feel. And so when I come through your neighborhood, I see the difference. I see the change. I can feel it. I can touch it. And so a lot of citizens out there don't know the struggle of what it takes to be an elected official and what we go through on a daily basis. You've done that for 16 years and certainly you have been a, a person who has been cool, calm, collective, and when you made and shared your comments, wisdom came with that. So you will truly be missed in this body and I appreciate your leadership, your commitment and your dedication. I think the person that you have chosen to replace you, Mrs. Graves, what I know of her, she has always held herself and, and good stead and I've never seen anything bad about her. In fact, I like her. Every time I saw her, I've either hugged her or we've had conversations in the past. So, so I'm, I'm excited about the choice that you have made to replace you and I look forward to working with that distinguished woman to move our community, our neighborhoods and this city forward. So thank you very much for the service to our citizens and to our people. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilwoman Jenny Spencer.
Councilwoman Cleveland, I have a selfish comment, which is that I, it's really hard for me to see you go. I, I would have loved more time to work with you and I want you to know how welcome you made me feel over the past five months since I was sworn into council. And Councilman Hairston mentioned, mentioned your timing and how you, you tend to make the right comment and the right observation at the right time. You helped to guide me and mentor me as a new council colleague in all the right moments when I needed that, 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 that opportunity. And I'm, I'm just, it's just been a pleasure to get to know you. And like Councilman Griffin said, I'm, I'm the same way. You're not rid of me yet. I plan to be in touch and unless you change your phone number, you're going to be hearing from me. I look forward to it. It's just truly been a pleasure and I'm, I couldn't be more excited for your next steps and what, what will, life will reveal for you in this next chapter for you. And I know it'll be something, something wonderful and fulfilling and meaningful in your life's journey and just truly look forward to staying in touch. And I'm delighted that you've recommended Ms. Gray. Ms. Gray, I look forward to meeting you. If I, your, your leadership in the community is impressive and I look forward to getting to know you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Tony Brancatelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it certainly is a great day today. And I hope you warned Dolores about my dad humor as it comes across. The, we've been on council for 16 years together and had a lot of ups and downs and, you know, truly can say that you always act for your residents in our city first before anything else and just amazing your passion for our city and how important, how you wore that out there. And as, as people have noted, you weren't always the most outspoken, but boy, you certainly carried it when, when, when you had to and stood up for your community and, and Blaine mentioned a little earlier calling you, calling you sister, but one thing we've all learned on council for some of us guys is don't cross the sisterhood because that'll get you in a lot of trouble. And, but you've just been a great, great colleague to work with and just high values and high character and I'm looking forward to working with Ms. Gray as we move forward. Thank you very much for your, your commitment to our city.
Thank you, Council Brancatelli. Councilman Mike Polencik.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, my honorable colleagues. I've had the opportunity over the years to serve with many, many outstanding and wonderful people and I want to say to Phyllis, I appreciate your dedicated service to the people of Ward Five. You know, my brothers and sisters, we are a band of brothers and sisters. At the end of the day, we disagree, we argue, we vote differently, we support different candidates at different times for different positions, but we all know what the responsibility of this job is. It's a great responsibility and it's become a very, very difficult job over these years, dealing with all the social issues and things that quite frankly, when I came in years ago, I would have never even ever imagined that I'd be dealing with today, you know, never would have imagined. So I want to say to Phyllis, I appreciate your dedicated service to the people of Ward Five. I only have one question pertaining to the appointment. Is this a, meant to be an interim selection or does Ms. Gray intend to run for reelection?
We'll let her.
Okay.
Make that decision, but you know, this is, this is not a, this is not a Attorney General situation. This is, this is an appointment that we're doing.
I, I understand it, but I would, I was just trying to get some better understanding because in the past, there were people that we have appointed that were interim and I just need to.
Not, let me just, this is not interim.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Carrie McCormick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And you know, the good thing about going last is I'm not going to repeat everything that's already been said, but look, I'll just say that, you know, there is, there's so much noise out there today in the world, both through social media and otherwise. And although it's not new to Phyllis, her steady and thoughtful approach is just so refreshing, especially today with all the noise out there. And so that's something that I'll always remember, you know, the contemplative nature of her, the, I, I don't know who I was talking to a couple of days ago, but the, the word Dean came to my mind. I know we reserved that for Mike, but I mean, the same thing with her. I mean, it's that, that, that history, that knowledge, that insight that young whippersnappers like myself don't have, that she can lay out when needed and it's just, you know, incredibly appreciated and it benefit, benefit to our city. There's no doubt about it. When I first came onto council, Phyllis is my office mate across the hall and, you know, she gave me a little book about what to, you know, how to be a successful newly-elected official and I never returned it to her. It's in my office after I read it and I still feel bad about that today. But Councilwoman Cleveland, I will make up for that by giving that book over to Ms. Gray that came from you five years ago so that she can read it and seek the same wisdom that I got out of that book. But I know that Councilwoman Cleveland's still going to be around. We can still harass her. We can still call her and ask for her advice and hopefully still see her around the neighborhoods as well. But it's been just a great pleasure to work with you, really as a mentor to me and really as a, someone who shared a lot of knowledge and insight. So they don't make them with the, you know, integrity and steadiness and thoughtfulness like Phyllis as much anymore. So we're going to miss that, but I know that we'll see you soon, hopefully vaccinated in person instead of these screens. But it's been a pleasure sharing our stories and connecting on dogs and everything in between. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council McCormick. Lastly, we have Councilman Brian Casey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I've been on council, you know, I've watched former Councilmen Semperman, Mitchell, Kane and Zone all leave and when they all left, that's a lot of institutional knowledge that walks right out the door with them. But with Phyllis Cleveland, you could take their institutional knowledge combined and, and that's Phyllis, right? Phyllis knew exactly which door to open, which door to close, which door to guide you right through, which door to tell you stay the heck away from. And there, you know, there's an old eighties commercial from EF Hutton and the slogan was EF Hutton talks, people listen. And, and that's kind of Phyllis Cleveland, right? She wasn't a pound my chest, get up and scream and holler type of person. And you just kind of sat back and, and waited for Phyllis to say something because you knew what was coming out of her, her mouth at the time was going to be knowledgeable and the truth and you wouldn't be able to argue with it, even though Phyllis and I maybe weren't on the same page with some legislation or not, I could always knock on her door and let her know that and she would always be comforting in knowing that we weren't going to agree on legislation, but trying to be reasonable with, with the way that she saw that and, and I will appreciate that very much. So, you know, Phyllis is, is a mentor. She's a role model and I think more of us should, should take that, that philosophy that Phyllis counseled with and, and just being knowledgeable when you speak and not just a sounding board because that was Phyllis. And Phyllis, you're going to be extremely missed on this council. Me personally, I'm going to miss our NLC time together and our conversations and our little secret trips that we would take, you know, when we would go out, but you really are, I mean, I, I almost feel like you're, you're one of the last of the Mohicans, right? There's a lot of institutional knowledge walking out the door with you that, you know, only time can, can make up for and who knows, you know, what anybody's time is on council. But I personally, on behalf of the city of Cleveland and, and not only your own residents, but you know, the residents in my ward as well, for your leadership and for your thoughtfulness, you're a friend, you're a colleague and whatever your endeavors are in the future, I wish you all the luck in the world. Thanks for being Phyllis.
Thank you, Councilman. And I will turn the floor to Ms. Gray, but before I do, I just want to make sure that I acknowledge everything that, that Phyllis means to me as Council President. She has been my advisor, my confidant. When there's a lot of issues swirling, she knew how to focus on what was important and, and target the issue that was, that was at hand and kind of clear away all the sideshow noise and just focus on what we need to do to get done. I've always relied on that. She's given me more articles and reading material that I could keep up with, but I did my best and I at least read 80% of them.
It'd be a quiz.
Yeah. But want to thank you and just again, just in, as Blaine said, I mean, this is, this goes beyond a professional relationship. Phyllis has been my friend. We've been through a lot of battles together. We came in at about the same time and going to miss you, but you can't get away as it's been said before. So with that, Ms. Gray has been recommended by Councilwoman Cleveland. And before we take our caucus vote, I would like to give her an opportunity to address the body. Ms. Gray, welcome to Cleveland City Council and I want to give you a few minutes to introduce yourself and tell us something about yourself.
Hi, hi, how you doing? My name is Dolores Gray. I, I want to say that I have a long respect, the work of Cleveland City Council. I look forward to working with this body and the service to the people of Cleveland. My years of the community activism has shown me that an undivided team is far more productive than a single worker. My community work involves the areas of concentration, general quality of life, of housing, healthcare and legal assistance. For nine years, I have been a member of the Cohogah County Democratic Party of, Party Executive Committee of Ward Five, precinct committee member. For more than 10 years, it has been my fashion search on both the progressive acting council and the local vice of council of CMHA. As a leader in both groups, I organized and advocated for the rights of public housing for the residents. Since 2015, I have been employed with Carol Lyons Health Center, which is dedicated to providing quality healthcare to our undeserved population. My work is a community engagement, at community gate coordinator at Carol Lyons and have been working in the community for, for several days a week. I am currently on the board of Friendly and Settlement, Burton Vale Car Development Corporation and the ACLU. I, I am a senior central promise ambassador and I serve as a board, I served as a board member of the Legal Aid Society for seven years. I'm also on the right to counsel as well as a pro bono committee. I'm also, I'm also on the East Tech Alumni Board for 17 years to give out scholarship fund to our young scholars to educate their career goals and their future goals. I humbly ask for your vote to join this body and replace the Honorable Phyllis E. Cleveland as Ward Five Council, Council Member. And thank you all for allowing me to appear before this caucus today.
All right.
And I'd like to say one more thing that I know Lonnie Burton when I was 18 years old and he the one who actually got a group of us after we graduated to also be registered voters. So I've been a registered voter for life. So Lonnie Burton was, was a, was a person, a person that you want to know with knowledge and inspiration and he led all of us after we graduated to learn to vote, to be a part of what we need to know about government. So thank you.
Well, thank you for those remarks and welcome. At this point, when we have a recommendation, we begin by calling on the unit rule. For those of you, I believe everybody's familiar with this, having just been through this with Councilwoman Spencer's appointment, but what the unit rule is, it is a, it is the, it is intended so that we have all of our discussions as a body before we're in the official council meeting and we, we, you know, this is the time where we invoke the unit rules so we can talk through any issues, have our caucus vote and it gives the person, today we are doing it the same day, but there are times when somebody may need to give their employer notice, they need to have some confidence that things will, that the unit rule will, that they will be appointed. So that is the history of the unit rule. It is intended that we have our discussions now, but when we, when we do reach the floor of council, which in this case is a computer, that, that the unit, the unit rule vote will, will carry. Are there any questions before we, before we call the roll? Seeing no hands, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll on unit rule.
Kelly.
Yes.
Bishop.
Yes.
Brancatelli.
Yes.
Conwell. Griffin.
Yes.
Hairston.
Yes.
Johnson. Bashir Jones. Joe Jones.
Yes.
Casey.
Yes.
McCormack.
Yes.
Mooney. Polencik. Santana. Sly.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Allen.
At 12. Thank you. 12 yeas, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. At this point, as we, as we mentioned, there is a vacancy in Ward Five. At this point, I would call for nominations for the, to fill the Ward Five vacancy.
Mr. Chair, I nominate Dolores Gray for the vacancy, for the Ward Five vacancy.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations for the Ward Five vacancy? Can I get a motion?
I move we close the nominations.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Nominations are hereby closed. Is there any discussion on the nomination of Dolores Gray to fill the Ward Five vacancy? Seeing no hands at this point, I will call on the clerk to call the roll. And I will ask members to state the name of their preferred candidate for the, to fill the vacancy in Ward Five.
Kelly.
Dolores Gray.
Bishop.
Dolores Gray.
Brancatelli.
Dolores Gray.
Conwell. Griffin.
Dolores Gray.
Hairston.
Dolores Gray.
Johnson. Bashir Jones.
Dolores Gray.
Joe Jones.
Dolores Gray.
Casey.
Dolores Gray.
McCormack.
Dolores Gray.
Mooney. Polenzic.
Dolores Gray.
Santana. Sly.
Dolores Gray.
Spencer.
Dolores Gray.
13.
13.
13 yeas.
13 yeas.
Congratulations. You have received the unit vote of the council. We will have a, we will vote at our meeting, which will immediately proceed our finance committee meeting. Is there anything you would like, anything else you'd like to leave us with?
I want to thank everybody for voting for me and supporting Phyllis Cleveland to nominate me for this position.
Well, thank you very much. If there is nothing else for the good of the order, this was our sole agenda item. And if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting.
I have a question, Chair.
Councilman?
Where are we at with the public comment ordinance?
So Ms. Tilly has forwarded to me, and John James have forwarded their research. Once, I was, prior to the vacancy of Councilman Cleveland managing this, I'm gonna call a meeting of the Rules and Operations Committee. And then we're gonna put into operation, we're going to make a recommendation to the council. That will take place, I believe, either this week or next.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anything further for the good of the order? Seeing no hands, we are now adjourned. Those on finance, if you could keep this screen up and sign back on at, or turn your microphone and your camera back on.